Could I have everybody rise? And Mayor, Vice Mayor Ken Brown, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. City Clerk, could I have a roll call?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Present.
Councilmember Hundley?
Here.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Here.
Mayor Cook?
Here. Comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, matters presented at this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at this time when the item comes to council consideration. Upon being acknowledged by the mayor, please step to the podium and speak into the microphone. Begin by stating and spelling your name. Mayor Brown.
Ken Brown. Spells itself. I want to talk about the stress that is out in our community. I was always one who, for a very long time, never said that Sonoma is changing, that it's stayed the same since I moved here in 1974. I'm not convinced that that's accurate today. I'm a renter. People who rent need protection from this city council and from city staff. It's a horror show out there. Hold on to your places where you live. It's brutal. I also want to say, there are some projects coming forward. Use those projects wisely. There's a finite amount of land in the city, and you're not going to have a whole lot of opportunities to build the kind of housing that the community needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, my name is Bonny Joy Kaslann, K-A-S-L-A-N, 251 Del Rio Paseo. We're looking forward to Wednesday's second study session of the Sonoma Rent Control Stabilization Project for manufactured housing communities. The Tri-Park Committee, in concert with our attorney, Will Constantine, has worked diligently to present material that analyzes the matrix that we'll be studying. We will be presenting this material to you prior to that meeting, and it's our sincere hope that you will go over this packet of information so that when we all get together, we all have some familiarity with what we've been presented. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Gary Hermes, 12 Vermont Street in Rancho de Sonoma. First of all, I'm really proud of Sonoma for committing to protecting the affordability of its manufactured housing communities. It's in your house, in our housing element, and as a part of our process here of revising the ordinance, I know it's been very, very complicated with lots of back and forth, so I really appreciate the patience that you have shown. And one of the things that we're very excited about is something that David Artson did, and you probably have already received this. David is a businessman, and a good one, and so he approached it from a businessman's attitude. And it's a very easy read, and it's in technicolor, so if you haven't read it, I encourage you to do that before the study session. I think you'll appreciate the work that David put into this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shelley Ritchie, R-I-C-H-E-Y. No address, still homeless. Wish I could be a renter. Can't do it. I basically just came here tonight to urge you to put on the agenda rent control, affordable housing, justified evictions, because every day, every week, I run into people who have been evicted. I run into coworkers whose children have to move back into the house because they can't find any place. I just went to the dog park. I'm the treasurer. We have a little donation box, because we run only on donations, and I always check it, and I ran into two more friends of mine. One of them's living in the homeless shelter. She worked for an architectural firm for years. She got kicked out. Then, in the parking lot, one of my girlfriends, driving a red Ferrari, just got kicked out of her place. She's an interior decorator. She does well. She can't find a place. This is a problem, folks, okay? And I urge you, put it on the agenda sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mario Castillo, 431 Kelsey Court. Well, I wanted to swing by and say hello, and also to share with you guys a few stories. Maybe I just, I'll pick the best one, if it could be called the best one. It was a young man. He has, he approached, he came to our Family Research Center on Friday, and the issue was that he was renting a, he's renting a garage. He's a single dad. His wife and the rest of his family was deported a few years ago, so he stayed here because that's, but his, one of his sons is a US-born citizen. So he is having to be a single dad. Not sure if you guys know what that is. So now he's having to rent a garage, and the issue was that the lady that he was renting the garage from would not allow them to use the bathroom after nine o'clock at night, and then would not allow them to use the bathroom before seven in the morning. So it was a bit difficult for the child to go to school, and then that was having some sort of repercussions in school in his performance. So, you know, these are real issues, and, yeah, he happens to live in the Alcoy area, but guess what? He works for a vineyard management that takes care of all those vineyards in the valley. So I think that, I mean, yeah, you can make the argument that that doesn't concern you because it's, it does, it's not under city limits, but, you know, he works for, you know, they help. And then, a lot of our families who live on the other side, they work on, at the Rado Hotel, they go on the Fig, all those nice restaurants that are on the plaza, you know? So if they want, if they need, they appreciate the work that they do, they also need a house to live. And that's having a terrible, the kids in our school, they're having a terrible time. So they talk about the A-study that they're doing at the Hannah Boys Center. They talk about, you know, that this sort of issue that, that traumatic issue that kids have to go through and how that affects. So this sort of situation, when they're homeless and they don't have what they need in order to succeed, it's ridiculous to expect them to succeed, you know? So, yeah, you could be a mentor, and you could do all those great things to appear on the newspaper, but, but really, you know, this, this is a real issue that could be looked into differently. So thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Ransom, I live in Santa Rosa. I know it's, this is an issue that's close to your heart. We'd like to give you an opportunity to deal with it by presenting material and bringing people in who are, step by step, involved. This is, I've watched this develop in our church, from people not being willing to speak about their situation, to the church endorsing a resolution for declaring a homeless emergency, a housing emergency in this city and in the county, and working on the solutions as a community. This is a community, the whole, whether it's the city or county. And I know this is an extremely difficult situation for you guys, because we're asking you to solve a national problem locally, but this is happening around the region. It's around the country, and we can take a step forward on it. I'd like to just say a word to the people that are watching this on television, because we find we're hearing that, oh, we saw you on TV. Right on, keep it going. Come on in. The next council meeting is two weeks, right? Come on in and have your say. Three minutes at the beginning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Kyle. I live at 14 Haasienda. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, I'd like to state that the mobile home rent control revision that's before this council is not a negotiation. The homeowners are not asking this council to mediate between us and the park management. If we wished a negotiation, either individually or collectively, we could have entered into lease negotiations with, with the park owners, and they have that same option as well. Rather, what's before the council is a petition by some members, or I should say, some citizens of the city of Sonoma. It's a petition to restore balance that's grown far apart since the last '98 revision of the ordinance. It's a petition that also seeks to protect the city of Sonoma and all its citizens from the park owner's costly tactic of litigation, which can be used to attack the current ordinance. I ask the council to consider this revision whole and unmodified and not piecemeal, just as the park owners, '98 revision was passed whole and without any consideration for the homeowners. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, honorable mayor and councils and staff. Hi, wow, this is really heavy tonight, what I'm hearing, you know, from renters here in Sonoma. So that's why it's very urgent for us to be addressing the rent stabilization ordinance for manufactured homes, which is actually has been in a... Hello? Oh, my name's Ann Colacchides, and I'm, actually, tonight I'm speaking as the president of Sonoma Valley G S M O L. That's the Golden State Mobile Homeowners League, and I'm the, I'm the president for this region. But tonight, I want to speak to you about economic eviction. We're hearing about eviction, you know, there's no protections here in Sonoma, as I guess you know. Manufactured homeowners have some protection, because we can't really just pick up our homes and move them, so we have some protections through the state law, but I want to speak about economic eviction. It's a certain type of eviction where the rent goes up to the point where the homeowner can no longer afford the rent and has to abandon their home. It can happen with the automatic rent increases that the park owners get every year. That's a reason that we need to keep an eye on that CPI index, you know, and the percentage, because like the proverbial frog in the water that heats up gradually, it heats up if these rent increases accumulate until, until, until the park, the homeowner can no longer afford to, to keep their home. And the frog gets boiled to death. We all know what happens to the poor frog. So it also can happen, like it happened at Contempo Marin, where Bradley Usum was the attorney, the last time he was in the Bay Area peddling his wares. He was at Contempo Marin, and the rents there went up to $2,000. Well, the homeowners there could not afford those rents, and, but they also soon found out that their homes were no longer of any value. They couldn't keep them, and they couldn't sell them, and they had to abandon those homes, which became the property of the park owners represented by Bradley Usum. We all know he eventually lost, but what did the community lose? What is at stake here in this community? So I ask you, take heart, be brave. Don't let them bully Sonoma into compromising the values of this community. Don't let them bully Sonoma into forsaking the economic security and the housing security of almost 10% of its population, all of whom are seniors and working families. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I will come back to meeting dedications. Does any of my colleagues on the council have any meeting dedications tonight? Seeing none, we have a presentation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Is someone here to receive that? Could you state your name?
My name is Tatiana Lopez.
Whereas the city of Sonoma recognizes that the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, and security due to the seismic use of emotional, physical, sexual, and psychological and economical control of abuse. The YWCA Sonoma County is a community-based organization affiliated with the YWCA USA. 2015 marks the 40th anniversary of YWCA Sonoma County and honors their mission to empower, educate, and support domestic violence survivors and their children who are unsafe in their own homes. YWCA Sonoma County operates our communities, our communities-only confidential safe house shelter, only 24/7 domestic violence crisis hotline, and the only therapeutic preschool serving one of our most vulnerable populations, children's three to five years old. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, genders, ages, sexual orientation, and income levels. Stopping the cycle of vicious criminal assault in the house requires a coordinated effort between the criminal justice system and the agencies that provide services to victim as well and resolve the, and bring courage of the abuse survivors. Whereas only a cooperation, community effort will put an end to the cycle of domestic violence. Now therefore, the mayor of Sonoma do hereby proclaim October 2015 Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And thank you for being here, and would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor and esteemed city council staff members, community members. My name is Tatiana Lopez, and I am with the YWCA Sonoma County Community Service Manager. On behalf of our board of directors, staff, volunteers, and our clients at the YWCA, thank you for honoring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month with this proclamation. Established in 1975, the YWCA of Sonoma County is honored by acknowledgment of the 40th anniversary ensuring the safety of families of Sonoma County. It is startling to realize that one in four women will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. The CDC reports 4.7 million women are victims of physical assault by intimate partner each year. Women 18 to 24 are most at risk, and only 55% of women victims will report to police. You don't have to be personally affected by domestic violence to know that is a public crisis. So what are we doing about it? As the proclamation states, the YWCA Sonoma County operates the county-only confidential domestic violence shelter. We also operate the county's only 24-hour crisis line. We receive about 3,000 phone calls each year. We run a preschool for children that are three to five years old called The Special Place, and why is it so special? It is the county's only therapeutic preschool, which means we offer therapy services for young children, one of our community's most vulnerable. The YWCA provides domestic violence awareness for our community during this month, and we thank you all for having us here and for proclaiming October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you want to get a picture?
Yes. Put your mind again. Thanks.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Is there any council questions? Councilmember Hundley? Yes.
I would like to remove item 4C.
Does any other council members? I will move it to public. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council for discussion and action. Vice Mayor Gallion?
I'd like to go ahead and move to approve the consent calendar agenda and order, with the exception of item 4C.
Second. Is there any other discussion on these items? Seeing none, city clerk, could I call for a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. For public, the consent calendar, item 4A, 4B, 4D, 4E, 4F, and 4G were a 5 to 0 vote, and that brings us to item 4C, adoption of an ordinance related to the automatic appointment of commission alternates. Councilmember Hundley?
Sure. I voted against this last time too, but it's because I believe that the automatic appointment should apply to all alternates, including the seats that we've deemed out of city and not just the in-city seats, so I can't support it.
Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, I will take it to public comment on item 4C. Seeing none, I will bring it back to council discussion and action.
No to approve?
Second.
4C.
City...
And that's a second.
City clerk, we have a motion by Councilmember Aggermonte and a second by Vice Mayor Gallion. Could I call for a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
No.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. For public, we just passed item 4C, adoption of an ordinance relating to the automatic appointment of commission alternates, 4 to 1, which moves us to item number 5, consent calendar for the council as a successor agency. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. Is there any discussion of council? Seeing none, I will take it to public for public comment. Seeing none, I will bring it back to council for discussion and action. Vice Mayor Gallion?
I'd like to go ahead and approve the consent calendar agenda order for city council as successor agency, items 5A and 5B.
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, city clerk, could I call for a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. For public, the city council, at a 5 to 0 vote, just approved the consent counter of item 5A and 5B, which moves us on to item 7 in our regular calendar. Item 7A, discussion, consideration of possible action to conduct the first reading and introduction of an ordinance, adding chapter 9.60 of the Sonoma Municipal Code to regulate and prohibit the use of leaf blowers within the city limits. City Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Cook, members of the city council. On September 9th, staff presented a draft of a standalone ordinance specifically related to the use of leaf blowers in the city of Sonoma. Following council review and questions, the item was open for public comment. Overall, 30 speakers expressed their views on the subject matter and, and the draft ordinance. At the conclusion of the public testimony, council reconvened their discussion on, of the draft ordinance. While full consensus was not reached on every section, direction was given to return the ordinance for first reading. The final ordinance has been prepared, including specific changes that received consensus of council. The single issue which did not receive a clear majority consensus of council is section 6.6, or 9.60.030, use and type of leaf blower, and is presented in the ordinance in the original language that was presented in the draft ordinance. So in summary, the sections contained in the final ordinance presented are as follows. Section 9.60.30, 030, use and type of leaf blower, the following provisions are contained in the final ordinance presented tonight. The use of gas-powered leaf blowers to be banned in all areas of the city of Sonoma by all users. The use of all other powered leaf blowers, battery, and electric powers to be banned in all areas of the city of Sonoma with exception to commercial and mixed-use zones and areas owned by the city of Sonoma and under the maintenance responsibilities of the city public works department. And as previously stated, there was no clear majority consensus on this section of the Section 9.60.30, 030, days and hours of operation. Council discussed modifying the current hours of operation with respect to the commercial and mixed-use zones and in-city-owned parcels, and following discussion of the three potential options, council reached majority consensus to include operating hours to be limited to Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Section 9.60.030, decibel levels. Council reached majority consensus to maintain consistency with the noise ordinance. The decibel level in the proposed ordinance shall remain at 70 dB, measured at 50 feet from the noise source, and this is consistent with the noise ordinance for all other outdoor equipment. Section 9.60.050, property owner and operator to receive the citation or fine. Council reached majority consensus that both the property owner or tenant and the landscaper or operator of the equipment will be each subject to the violation under the ordinance. The fine that may be imposed for violation depends, depends upon whether the violation is prosecuted as an infraction, misdemeanor, or administratively. The ordinance states that the first violation would receive a courtesy warning along with a summary of the ordinance regulations. The next violation by the same person or at the same location will trigger the imposition of a fine. If the violation is prosecuted as an infraction, then the second violation brings a $100 fine. The next violation within a year carries a $250 fine, and a third and subsequent violation within a year carries a $250 fine per violation. If the violator is prosecuted under the city's administrative filing procedures, the amount of the fine will be dependent upon the fine schedule, which will be adopted by a council resolution, to be brought back as a separate action. And finally, if prosecuted as a misdemeanor, penalty cannot exceed $1,000 per violation and six months incarceration. The ordinance penalties and enforcement provision follows all other provisions found throughout the municipal code. And lastly, section 4, the transition period for implementation. Council reached a majority consensus to provide a transition period for implementation. The ordinance provides for an effective date 30 days following the second reading, but an implementation date of February 1st, 2016, and this will allow sufficient time for the city to, number one, notify residents and commercial businesses regarding the ordinance provisions and restrictions, and to two, to prepare for the method of enforcement of the new regulations. That completes staff's report, and we're here for questions.
Is there any council questions? Seeing none, I will go ahead and open up public comment, and before I do, I just want to let the audience to please know that I will not tolerate, or the council will not tolerate, any clapping or excessive talking.
No clap around. Okay. I'll keep it simple. I've been on both sides of this issue. In hindsight, when I had the opportunity to agree with Mayor Cook and ask for this to be put on the ballot, I chose not to. I was wrong. I was wrong. For me, the best solution here is to let the voters decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Pass Mayor Brown. Can I get a show of hands of how many people will be speaking on this tonight? I roughly see 12.
Good evening. My name's Phil Busalaki. I live at 244 Penya Avenue in B-U-S-A-L-A-C-C-H-I. I sent all of your council people an email that I thought, thank you, Ms. Aggermonte, for sending me the only answer that I received. I just want to say that this has morphed into something other. By allowing the city to, in the business district, to do it, you're saying that it's okay for us to do it and not you, and that's not right. I agree with former Mayor Brown. We should put it on the ballot if that's the thing. If we can't come to an agreement that certain days and certain times in certain areas would be an option, then that's, you know, it should go on the ballot. I think the voters in the area. There were people that I know that spoke up here against the leaf blowers, do not live in town. So I hope you all will just take what I wrote and maybe use it, you know, to make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could get members of the audience that are going to speak to please form a line. Just a few at a time.
Vicki Mullis, 1278 Fire Creek Drive. I sent this email, but I had it kicked back to me, so I'm just going to read it to you. Dear council members, I would greatly appreciate your reconsideration of the proposed leaf blower ban on residents within the Sonoma city limits. As elected officials, it is your responsibility to represent all of your constituents equally. To impose an ordinance that will create a hardship on many while allowing the city and mixed-use exceptions is extremely divisive and discriminating. Inasmuch as there are restrictions already in place, it would appear most reasonable to actually enforce them before enacting such an unreasonable solution to a supposed problem for a select few. As stated by many, please consider allowing the voting public to once and for all settle this matter. And as a side note, we have people that are living in Sonoma Creek and in Fire Creek, and I think that that's a much more serious problem for you as a city council to be addressing. And let's just let the voters of this city that actually live in the city that have a say by putting it to a general vote, and I'd appreciate your consideration on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Georgia?
Hi, I'm Georgia Kelly. I'm Mitchell Way in Sonoma. I was going to speak about something else tonight, but I had the good fortune of running into a former mayor and eight-year city council member Larry Murphy, who you probably all know as Murphy's Irish pub owner. And he was just coming into the bank parking lot as I was leaving, and he said, "Stop, I want to say something to you." And I thought, "Okay, I want to hear this." He got out, the first thing he said when he got out of the car is, "You've convinced me." I said, "What? What about?" And he said, "The leaf blower issue." He said, "I was always opposed to your position. I didn't want a ban on leaf blowers, but you guys have done your homework." He said, "The research you provided on the health hazards of the use of leaf blowers has convinced me," and today he would vote for the ordinance to ban leaf blowers. And I was really heartfelt by that because we've done so much work, research, to really find all the evidence that proves the point that leaf blowers are hazardous to our health. So he commended our group for the work we've done, and I hope that those of you on the council can see the wisdom of what, where he has come to from the work we presented to all of you. Larry Murphy said, "This is a no-brainer now. They've got all the evidence. All the health hazards of cigarettes at one time were proven so many years ago, and that this is similar to that." And regarding the putting this to a vote, he agreed with what I said, which is, this is the job for the city council. In every single city where leaf blowers have been banned, it has been done by the city council. No city council has sloughed it off to the voters. And I think that's very clear. He agreed as a former mayor and councilperson that this is a job for the city council to make a decision. So much time has gone into preparing the ordinance, so much effort has gone into supplying all this information, and to all of a sudden come up with another idea that was actually dismissed a few months ago as if it were new, I think is a serious problem. So I know a lot of us get either bullying remarks, or we really need to, I think, stand up to what we believe in and what we know about the health effects of the use of leaf blowers and the particulate matter that is blown into our lungs. And I'm hoping that the city council tonight will put the health of our Sonoma residents ahead of the profits and the business interests of a very few people and consider the health of our whole community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I get this right this time. Okay. Josette Rose Eicher, 1110 Loma Court, and I am from Boys' Hot Springs. The last time I was here, I spoke about an incident with a 12-year-old child using a gas-powered leaf blower. I'm back now because it looks like the city council is close to banning gas-powered leaf blowers, but perhaps allowing electric ones to be used in mixed-use, commercial zones and on city property. I am back to urge a total ban. There are 250 residential units in mixed-use zones, including many apartments with young children. It would be great to give these residents the same peace and quiet and freedom from filth flying in their faces as all the other residents of the city. As I said, the last time I was here, the city of Sonoma could set an example and be a catalyst for the rest of the county to ban these things, and one day we would be rid of them in the Springs, too. This seems like a small thing, but it's really way up there in the quality of life in our neighborhoods. Leaf blowers are deployed on my block about twice a week. They have been constant now for 13 years. So for council members on the fence, please really consider a total ban. Before we moved here, we were in Sonoma for 10 years. Every day, you become more and more immune to the noise around you, and you accept and live with it. In fact, if you're going to live in a large city, you have to, or you'll go crazy. But my point is that Sonoma and Sonoma Valley is not a big city, and that is why people choose to live here. In the 13 years I've lived here, I consider leaf blowers to be the number-one noise irritant and the thing that makes me think about moving most often. On Saturday, we walked up Mountain Avenue, and we were on our way back down. Up until then, it was total quiet except birds. Then there was a gas-powered leaf blower. The guy was walking around a tiny lawn, blowing 10 or 12 leaves around. There were none mounded up anywhere, just the 10 or 12 being blown from place to place. Then as we started to walk away from him, he got bored and started blowing the dirt in the street around. As we walked away and the noise receded, my husband began coughing from the filth, and I asked myself, "Why? Why do we need this useless, noisy, polluting tool? Why? Because many of us have convinced ourselves that we do, and that really is the only reason." Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Fred Alabach, 19550, 8th Street East. Good evening, council. I would like to speak about the issue of whether or not you will vote on this issue or whether you put it to a vote by the city. And I think the idea of putting it to the vote by citizens, if that's the case, then I would like to see wine tasting on the plaza go back and get a vote by the citizens, and I'd like to see Montini Dogs get a vote by the citizens, because we got more than 1,000 signatures to 200, so we would win with that, according to also the Index Tribune survey. So if there's a thorny issue that, you know, you can't come to grips with, there's been a bunch of them that didn't get put to a vote, and I think that that would... And then I think about measure B, and there was a ballot initiative, and the city's default position was, let's let the process in place take care of that. But that was a much bigger issue than leaf blowers. That was about the whole future of the plaza and the tone of the plaza, and that was, let's the process in place take care of it. So that's you all voting on it and not shuffling that off and saying, "Let the citizens vote on it." So I think that to be consistent, you know, if you're going to try and put this to a citizens' vote, then a whole bunch of other things should go to a citizens' vote as well. So it seems like it's kind of an abdication of your responsibility to not vote on it yourself, given the history of the process in place and other thorny issues that were not put to a vote that probably would have gone a different way if they had been gone to a vote. So that's my opinion on that.
Thank you.
Patty DeFern, 465 East MacArthur Street. I spoke to you about this at the last meeting, but I left out the most important part, and that is that there are 482 cities, incorporated cities, in the state of California. Sonoma is one of those. Of those 482, 20 have leaf ban ordinances, but that's not quite true. Only four have leaf ban ordinances. The other 16 have leaf blower restrictions. So what you're looking at is a state that has decided that even though it may have issues, it's something that we really do need to live with. I wanted to tell you about the four cities. They're Hermosa Beach, Laguna Beach, Del Mar, and Santa Monica. These are cities that have a totally different plant life than us, and I'd like you to think more of ice plant and things like that, not many trees. They also are blessed with a wonderful natural leaf blower called ocean breezes. We unfortunately don't have that, but we have a fabulous deciduous plant environment here that is particularly noticeable this time of the year. And so even though they do present hazards, what we haven't done is really enforce the ordinance that we have. And I think that could take place with, because there's an issue, some education, some warnings, so to speak, and maybe not giving so many traffic tickets around the plaza, but have that person wander around the neighborhood and give the warnings. The final thing I'd like to say that I think that you're looking at a terrific expense. If you decide to ban or eliminate certain amounts of the gas blowers, Tiburon only allows 65 decibels, you have to look at the fact that the city would be using electric and the cost to the taxpayers of them having to carry around the electric things and doing this and doing that, the tax for the enforcement, the time for all of that. You're looking at, when they said $75,000 to $150,000, I think that was a very conservative thing. So and finally, I would just like to say that I think it's time for a reality here and that we need to do some cooperation amongst the people, but you also need to understand that in this hectic, crazy world, it's almost impossible for me, living next to the cemetery like I do. I leaf bode Friday. Saturday, the wind came up, our ocean breeze that made it here, and what I was able to do in 20 minutes took me an hour just one day later. And with our busy lives, it's almost impossible to do that, and I prefer not to pay someone to do it. Thank you very much for listening to me again.
Thank you.
Hi. Sarah Ford, East Napa Street in Sonoma. I've noticed a really interesting phenomenon lately as I've been walking around Sonoma, which is I've seen a lot more landscapers and gardeners using rakes and brooms. I don't know why, but what was striking to me about it is how happy they look. They're smiling, they're like, "Relax." And I've stopped and thanked them, and I say, "It's so quiet. Thank you." And they say, "Yeah." I mean, one thing I can say is I don't think I've ever seen a leaf blower operator smiling or looking relaxed or happy. So that's anecdotal and definitely, but definitely worth noting, but as you know, we've, Sonoma has really tried to focus on facts and science. And not that you need this additional confirmation, but I couldn't resist, there's a brand-new study, it's a very, very large study, and it was covered in the Pacific Standards last issue. It's from the NYU and other medical centers. I'm just going to quote a couple lines. Quote, "Studies have proven beyond doubt that inhaling these tiny particles increases the risk of heart attack, asthma, and lung dysfunction, to name just a few. The only question now is how much particulate matter can be safely inhaled? The answer appears to be very little," end quote. They continue, and here's the 30 seconds of science, I'm sorry. Doctors of complicated science, doctors have several theories to explain why inhaling pollution harms the heart and lungs. The tiny bits collect in the part of the lung where gas exchange occurs, preventing oxygen from entering the bloodstream and carbon dioxide from escaping, especially small particulate matter. And I'll add, that's the kind that, leaf blowers are unique in kicking up the very, very fine, finest particles. These small particulate matter can slip through the body's filters, enter directly into the blood where it can threaten other organs, end quote. I think the moral of the story here is that we do want to minimize especially fine particulate matter in any way we can, and to me, the most obvious way to do that would be to eliminate leaf blowers. I also wanted to highlight a couple of things from a very comprehensive 2010 report on leaf blowers that was prepared for the Burlingame City Council. Quote, "Childhood asthma is already an epidemic in our country, 5,000 deaths a year to children from asthma." And researchers note that leaf blowers have both a contributing and a causal effect on this respiratory disease, end quote. What that means is it doesn't just make it worse, it can actually cause asthma. For the Burlingame report, they also interviewed 13 California cities which have bans or partial bans and found, as has been reported before, that there were no jobs lost and no landscapers suffered economic consequences. I feel that there's ample evidence regarding the health and quality of life impacts from leaf blowers for the city council to make a decision to approve a leaf blower ordinance that's on the table tonight, and I really hope that you'll do so. Please keep in mind that there are over 900 signatures and now even more people that signed our leaf blower petition, and my time is up. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Cecilia Ponison on France Street in Sonoma, and good evening, Mayor Cook, Mayor Protime Gallion, councilmembers Edwards, Hunley, and Aggermonte. A couple of my heroes are Rachel Carson, who wrote Silent Spring, and Jane Goodall, considered to be the world's foremost expert on chimpanzees and a renowned humanitarian. Rachel Carson was a farm girl from Pennsylvania who became a marine biologist. Her work gave birth to the global conservation movement. She fought against powerful and politically connected chemical industries who questioned her findings. They called her a communist, they made fun of her physical appearance and the fact that she was unmarried. This was at a time when much science was funded by the military. They created synthetic chemicals called pesticides. These chemicals were used in aerial spraying. Rachel Carson didn't sit passively and accept the use of what she termed not just pesticides, but in reality, they were biocides. The chemicals being sprayed were killing unintended victims. She had proved the reality of bioaccumulation. These pesticides were a cocktail of cancer-causing agents. Her scientific work proved that the chemical companies lied about the safety of their products. Imagine that. Rachel Carson's work led to the creation of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. My other hero, Jane Goodall, is best known for her 55-year study of social and family interactions of wild chimpanzees. Today at 81, Jane's work revolves around inspiring action on behalf of endangered species and encouraging others to do their part to make the world a better place for people, animals, and the environment we all share. Here's my favorite quote from this extraordinary woman. Quote, "You cannot get through a single day without having an impact on the world around you. What you do makes a difference, and you have to decide what kind of difference you want to make." You three councilwomen now have the opportunity to make the kind of difference that is life-enhancing for all of us here in Sonoma. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David Eicher, 1110 Loma Court. Mayor Cook, city council members, thank you for addressing leaf blowers. First, a couple of things. The $75,000 to $150,000 is for enforcement of many ordinances, not just this change to the current ordinance, and you can verify that with the city manager. If I'm incorrect, please do. And that amount would probably be the same whether or not you make changes to... And that amount would probably be the same whether or not you make changes to the ordinance or leave it as it is. So the additional cost to the city would be buying electric leaf blowers to replace the gas-powered ones. Second, I know the state of California and the city and county of San Francisco, if a ballot measure is passed by the voters, it can only be changed or undone by the voters. I'm not sure about the city of Sonoma, if that's the case as well, you may want to ask the city attorney on that. So, but if you do put it to a vote, I would suggest do a complete ban citywide, gas and electric, and I bet you it will pass. Using leaf blowers without hearing protection causes hearing loss, period. Hearing loss from loud noises happens over time and cannot be reversed. I have some hearing loss over the past few years, but I attribute that to being in a rock band as a teenager a long time ago. So let me read to you from an Orange County grand jury report. Quote, "Noise interferes with communication, sleep, and work. The EPA claims noise degrades quality of life from impairing social interaction. It also reduces work accuracy and creates stressful and level frustration and aggravation. Blower noise can and probably does impair the user's hearing. A blower generates up to 95 decibels of noise at the operator's ear. Office of Safety and Health Administration requires hearing protection for noise over 85 decibels. Hearing protectors, as worn in the field, provide only a fraction of the attenuation needed for hearing protection. Deafness caused by noise is irreversible." So they also, a report from the California Environmental Protection Agency Air Resources Board cites three surveys of landscapers about protective gear and found that only 10% of the operators of leaf blowers were using them. In one survey, 27 of the workers were interviewed and seven of which claimed hearing impairment as a result of leaf blowers and two claimed to have breathing problems, which they attributed to use leaf blowers. So by banning all leaf blowers, the city will be helping the landscapers' workers protect their health and hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Bob Edwards, 310 East Napa Street, Sonoma. I want to start out by commending the council majority who has advanced a ban on leaf blowers in the city. If I had my druthers, it'd be a total ban. But I think you've heard a number of competing interests, let us say, here. And I'm always, perhaps because of my profession as a mediator, always looking for a compromise. And I think, as I've been thinking about it, that the ordinance that sits before you, as Ms. Hundley has proposed, represents a good compromise, namely, a ban on all leaf blowers of all kinds in residential areas, a ban on gas blowers in the mixed-use and commercial areas and for the public. So the city could still blow its leaves with electric blowers as they could in the commercial districts. I think that, which is part of the ordinance already written, is an excellent resolution of this issue. I ask you to resist the siren call of, "Let's put this on the ballot," for a number of reasons. Number one, I think you're being gamed by the opponents of the ban. Because if it, if you pass this ordinance, then they will have an opportunity to go to the, to start an initiative of their own. And I believe city attorney can explain how much time they'd have to get the necessary signatures to do that. In my opinion, and it's only an opinion, that would be kind of pretty much impossible for them to get those signatures, and they know it. They know they can't get those signatures, and that's why they want you to put it on the ballot. I would, in that regard, I would second the comments that have been made by my good friend, Fred Alabac. We are violently opposed on the issue of dogs on Montini. And Fred wants them, no, he doesn't. But I would just second what he has said. If you put this minor issue on the ballot, if that's what you vote to do, then you can rest assured you're going to be inundated with demands to put the dogs issue on Montini on the ballot, you're going to get, put the minimum wage issue on the ballot, you're going to put affordable housing issue on the ballot, and as someone mentioned, you're definitely going to put rent control issue on the ballot. Now, if you can put all of those things on the ballot, I think you can all probably resign and not have much to do for the rest of your terms. But that's not why I don't think you were elected, and I think you all understand that. I think the leadership that's been demonstrated on this leaf blower issue by the majority on council is commendable, and I thank you for it.
Thank you.
Stan Pappas, Sonoma Valley. No, I am not a resident of the city of Sonoma, but I am allowed to speak here, I believe. And I disagree completely with Mr. Edwards said. And the people that don't want this ban will get it on the ballot. They will get the required signatures. It's already started. And it's going to be on the ballot next November. So I commend all these people that were here and telling us about my health problems, which I don't really have any. But if I had allergies, I wouldn't be living here. And if my son had asthma, I wouldn't be living here either. And no matter what you guys vote on today, if you're going to vote again, I don't have no idea, it's going on the ballot, and it will be defeated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name's Owen Woller. I live at 852 Second Street East. And I wanted to just attend this meeting to speak on a personal note about leaf blowers. I think that many, many people in Sonoma have converted from sprinklers to drip systems in order to conserve water. The problem with the drip system is it's not conducive to rakes or brooms, because these are little tubes that feed every plant. And when you use a rake or a broom, you're going to rake them up. And so you may achieve the objective of getting up leaves and debris, but now you're going to have to spend hours reconnecting the tubes. So this has got to cost each homeowner a great deal of money. And I can't quite see that anybody's going to be happy having to go from a short period of time to a long period of time. Now, I've only got a quarter acre on Second Street East, but today, the, my gardening service blew an 80-gallon container of debris. And the fall leaf season hasn't yet started, so you can, you can imagine how much they're going to have to try and sweep up. Anyway, that's just my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last name again? I couldn't, didn't hear your last name.
Woller, W-O-O-L-L-E-R.
Thank you.
I'm back again. Been here, I think this March 4th trip. My name's Bill Botif, and I live at 256 West MacArthur. I have a lot, it's about 10,000 square feet. We've got a lot of trees and what have you. I maintain my own yard. I don't hire a gardener. I cut my own lawn. I do my own cleaning. And most of the time, we don't use a blower. I have an electric blower, but I very seldom use it. But in the fall, we get a lot of leaves coming down off, we're surrounded, we've got all kinds of oak trees, what have you, and I use the blower. Now, you know, I'm not a kid. I mow my own lawn, and I cut my own tree, and I do everything myself. And I'm 84 years old, okay? And, you know, these people think that the only people who are concerned here are the gardeners and so forth. But I want to tell you that, you know, you can have your ban on blowers, but how about guys like me who take care of our own yard? I don't have a gardener. Okay? So I have to take care of my own. The noise doesn't bother me. I have a gas mower. Do I have to come back here next year when you want to ban my gas mower that makes more noise than the blower? I mean, this is just the beginning of nonsense, is what it is. You know, who's going to really get hurt with this ordinance? Poor, you know, rich people don't get hurt. You know, the guys that own all this property, have all the money, and they pay the gardener another 50 bucks a month? What do they care? They don't care at all. It doesn't mean a thing to them, another bottle of wine. But how about the people who clean their own yard? They can't afford a gardener. They got to do it themselves. Let's consider them. Now, there's some people here threatening you about putting it on the ballot. Well, okay. Why is that so bad? Is there something wrong? I mean, we do live in a democracy. If you folks up there think that, well, this is just, you know, too big a deal maybe for us, for you folks, then put it on the ballot. Let the people vote on it. I don't have any fear of it. If the residents of this community want it, I live here, I'm a resident, I'm happy, I love it in Sonoma. And I take care of my own yard, and I resent somebody telling me that, how I have to maintain it. And as I said, this is only the beginning of where we're going. Next year, it's going to be my lawnmower and God knows what else. As far as the noise goes, I was entertained the last couple of nights. I guess you guys had a big party up here in town, and the music was blaring, and I live five blocks away, and I was enjoying the music. I wasn't offended by it at all. So anyway, I hope you consider my approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sonoma resident Joel Vicford. Since this blower issue has come up, I've been making some observations of my own. And one of the things I've noticed is that in our neighborhood, the blowers make no more noise than lawnmowers, and the amount of dust raised is no more than a UPS truck driving down the street. I wonder how many of the complainers made noise and stirred up dust driving here, but then they want to take away my most efficient cleaning tool. I rode my bike in, and I think any of you who drove in, shame on you. There's an argument that blowers don't clean anything, that all they do is move debris from one place to another. And I think that very accurately describes a rake and broom as well. In, in my neighborhood, what typically happens is a blower is used to blow debris onto the lawn. The lawn is then mowed. The debris winds up in the clippings bag of the lawnmower, then it winds up in the yard waste collection, where it's then recycled. Without the blower, that dirt can be stirred up over and over. Every time a car goes by, that same dirt can get stirred up over and over. This is, this is a way to get rid of the debris. So if you're worried about asthma, consider the, consider the fact that these help get rid of that. Blowers enable us to keep our properties cleaner, and I don't, I haven't heard anybody arguing that they want a dirtier Sonoma. There's an established legal principle that is, it's called moving to a nuisance. And that's, that legal principle says it's unfair to move to a nuisance and then complain afterwards. Blowers have always been legal in Sonoma, which means they were legal when all of the complainers came to be here. Since I started writing and commenting on this issue months ago, I received nothing but support from my neighbors and friends, and I hope for further support from the city council. My final comment would be to, you know, those of you who moved to the nuisance and don't like it, there's a good chance a lot of us won't miss you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, mayor, residents, fellow gardeners, my name is Rocco Lucero. I live at 19225 Orange Avenue. I have been operating a small gardening and landscaping business for 38 years. I work one day a week in Sonoma. And I want to tell you, on my truck rack, I have two brooms. I have four rakes, and I have one blower. I use them all. And I would love not to use my blower, but it's a very valuable time-saving tool. I'm trying to reduce my imprint with carbon pollution, dust. I really am. I pull weeds by hand. We don't use Roundup. And it's not, I don't consider leaves dirt. We like to think we have a gardening sensibilities. We like to keep our properties clean, but I don't think they're dirt. And instead of banning, I was thinking about, I don't know if anybody's come up with a solution. You can restrict me. I don't need my leaf blower during the summer, during the spring. I don't need my leaf blower, but it would be a very valuable, valuable tool to have from November to February. When the days are shorter, the streets are moister, I have lots of other chores to do as well. We do more than just pick up leaves and clean gutters, which we do as well. We have lots of gardening, as you know, we prune, we do roses, we do all the things we do to make Sonoma a beautiful place to live. So I'm asking you, please, don't ban it, but you can give us tighter restrictions. And I also think that if my neighbor, my client asks me, "Please do not, my baby is sleeping. I'm just getting home from work, I need a nap," I would gladly stop. I think it's a neighbor-to-neighbor issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosemary, excuse me, Rosemary Pedrenzini, 437 Second Street West, Sonoma, like other people, should give where they live. Okay, here I go. 1954, I graduated from Sonoma High School. I went to work at Adobe Drug on the Plaza where Casa Grande is. Mr. Raydor was my boss. And four out of five people in 1954, our prescriptions were for allergies, because we're down in the valley. Look what's going on now. We have a red pickup. I wipe the windows in the morning, I go out, and we got yellow. It looks like somebody sprayed flour on our pickup. We're in the valley, we have allergies galore. I am not against leaf blowers. I bought two years ago a Black &amp; Decker battery one. Now, what I hear, I can't use it. And all I do is my front porch, maybe once a month, on Second Street West, the cars up and down. And if you come to my house, it looks like nice, fine, black sand on my porch on the window sills. Okay? I watch this stuff on TV. I was told by my family to shut my mouth and not come tonight, but you know me, here I am.
The council's being very tolerant, but please refrain.
Yes. You guys put up with me. I've lived here 69 years. Gary Edwards spoke at a lot of these meetings, and it's true. Talk to your neighbor. Talk to the gardener. Across the street from me is a, well, a bed and whatever weekend thing. I was in the kitchen, our house is small, and I heard this horrible noise. I'm going out the front door, and my husband said, "You can't go talk to those gardeners." Well, you don't tell me what I can't do. So I walked across the street and given them this, and I go, "Could you please, you could turn it down? It doesn't have to be so loud." And they look at me like, "Oh, you know, you old lady." But they turned it down, and the two gardeners still come across the street once a week, and it doesn't blow everybody's mind up or off. Okay. If you're going to eliminate leaf blowers, which is really crazy, what about the carpet cleaners? They start their thing up, you could hear them up and down my street, bum, bum, bum. You walk the front door, open it, they're cleaning the carpet. What about the motorcycles that go up and down Second Street? My last thing is, I spoke this years ago at front of city council. My neighbor, God bless her, they're dead, but Yvonne Valeni, Pat was in the hospital. I drove her back and forth. One night, she didn't want to bother me. She went to the hospital. She fell on the wet leaves. I get a call from Dr. Coita. She fell on the leaves and broke her hip. She was 86 years old. So we need to not get rid of leaf blowers. Thank you very much for putting up with me.
Thank you. And you're always welcome, as long as... Thank you, and you're always welcome as long as I'm mayor here.
Lori Sebastian, 450 Easton Drive. I have sent all of you a letter, I did not get a response from any of you. But Mayor Cook, members of the city council, it is my humble opinion that you have far more important issues to deal with than the issue of leaf blowers. When I look at the disasters in Middletown and Unqua in Oregon, I say to myself, really? We're still talking about leaf blowers? This is crazy. We have had three years of discussion on this, and it is abundantly clear to me and many that we are a divided community. I ask you to be fiscally responsible, put this on the November 2016 ballot. Please trust the voters of this community to make the decision for themselves, whatever that outcome may be. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask for quiet in the council, please. Thank you. I'm trying to be fair to both sides and keep this Sonoma proper, so please, just no more speaking, or I will call this meeting, and there will not be a vote tonight.
Yeah, I'm Rick Loser, and I live on Easton in Sonoma. I've been listening, I wasn't gonna say anything, about this leaf blower and the particulates that are in the air. Maybe you guys should give a lot of thought to Chemtrails. I don't know if you know about Chemtrails, but they spray a lot of aluminum particles down. So forget about your asthma from little leaf blowers, I think you have much more serious things to discuss and think about. Leaf blowers is just a waste of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it's with some trepidation that I get up here because this is not my forte. I said at the meeting, my name is Peter Hodgson, H-O-D-G-S-O-N. I live at 450 Denmark Street, and I have for 15 years, but in Sonoma since 1986. I came to the meeting on September the 9th, and I listened intently to the concerns, the emotions, the opinions that were shared at that meeting. And I was frankly, I came as an anti-blower or anti-banned person, and I kinda went away thinking, well, maybe I should reconsider myself. At the end of the meeting, I asked that you guys check the science that was being tossed about, because I think you need to make a fact-based decision about this particular issue. I mean, you've heard about the American Lung Association, you've heard about particulate matter, you've heard about exhaust, you've heard about noise, you've heard about a lot of things. And I would suggest to you that a lot of that information is not as current as it needs to be and not as relevant. I went out and did some research, because I didn't know that you guys would have the opportunity to get around to it or send staff to do it. So I sent you all this afternoon an email, it's about five pages long, there's a lot of stuff in it. I hope you take the opportunity to read it, because what I've done in the email is go to the facts of the matter. I've tried to get to resources that can specifically identify the issues that are at hand. For example, blowers don't create more pollution than automobiles, do the converse is true, both in terms of particulate matter in the air and also in gases released by the matter. I have in fact put together a binder, which I will provide to the city clerk, which actually goes into all of the information that I sent to you in the email and gives you the sources for it. All these folks are very well-intended, but they don't have any facts to back up what they're saying. Their claims make a point, they're biased, I would hope that you would look to the other side and make a determination based on the fact of the matter. In fact, we do not have a leaf blower-generated problem in the valley. We do have particulate matter in the air, which is natural particulate matter, but it's not generated by leaf blowers. I would share with you one thing. There was a report done by the San Joaquin Valley Air Quality District asked UC Riverside to do an assessment of the amount of dust generated by leaf blowers. When you get down to it, this is the amount of dust per capita generated by a leaf blower in Sonoma Valley. That compares to if you do it in, this happens to be Cheerios, we can all relate to those, if you do it in Cheerios, it's about a one and a quarter Cheerio. This is 108 milligrams of dust. That compares to 13 milligrams of dust produced by automobiles. Please look at the science. I appreciate you hearing me out, and I'll share this with the clerk.
Thank you.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Hi. Mary Lee Ebert, E-B-E-R-T, right across the street from the high school, Sonoma. I didn't have anything prepared, I've just been sitting back here writing some notes, so I just wanted to, we've done a lot of work educating the public on the hazards of this, so I just wanna touch on a few of the things that the people have said to try to help them understand. So for the person who's saying that we don't have any facts, if the National Institute of Health isn't a good enough place to go to, I don't know what is. The leaf blowers are not an important issue. I've got a child with compromised lungs and two others that have developed allergies. It is an important issue to me. The woman who had a friend who fell on the wet leaves, leaf blowers aren't designed to blow a wet leaf, you should at least get out a rake or a broom and clean them up that way. The gentleman that talked about banning carpet cleaners, I don't know about you, but I clean my carpets about every eight years, I don't do it every Tuesday and Thursday and Saturday like my neighbors do with their leaf blowers. The gentleman that brought up about the drawl kind of lawns, if you use one of those $22 piece brooms, they work great, 'cause I just did it last week, I thought I better get out here and try it myself. It cleaned up the lawn very nicely. Another gentleman talked about rich people being able to spend more money and that they're really hurting the less wealthy. We're actually hurting the less wealthy by hurting their health. They have no idea of the damage that they're doing to themselves while they're being employed by a landscaper. Our thousand signatures, over a thousand signatures represent all neighborhoods, it's not just one neighborhood. The fact that you can't see fine particulate matter and following guidelines isn't going to help that. And then another one talks about talking to your neighbors. I did go over and talk to my neighbor, and he told me to go jump in a lake and he could do whatever he wanted to do. So that doesn't necessarily work either. The enforcement officer job, I'm ready to take it on. If you're gonna pay me $75,000 to $150,000, I can guarantee you, I'll get all that money back in the fines that I write with tickets. And again, I don't think this is a ballot issue, it's not a political issue, it is a health issue. And we've hired you guys to represent us, and I hope that you'll represent our health and make it a really great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have the police officer please walk in? If you hear anybody speak, please remove them from this building. I wanna get through this.
I'll do you a favor.
Hello, I'm Lynn Clary, I live on Rosalie Drive. I was just watching all this and thinking, this reminds me of the 60s and 70s when we mandated the smog control and mileage for the automobiles. Everybody was upset about that. I was one of them, said it couldn't be done, I had all kinds of good reasons why it didn't work, and the facts were twisted. And anyway, that was not a ballot measure, had it been, it probably wouldn't have passed. And now here we are, all these years later, and we have the cars we have today. We got cleaner air than we had then. I lived in LA, I can tell you, go down there now, it's much better than it was then, which is unbelievable. Get better gas mileage, they're better running, they last longer. And all this came about because somebody said it couldn't be done, but they didn't put it to a ballot measure, they just had people visionary enough to look at the problem and say, this is how we're gonna solve it. I wondered today if we put it to a ballot measure to undo all the smog control rules that we passed way back then. Would anybody vote for that, or would any of you? How would that work? So I think what we're looking at here is very similar. I've seen the dust the leaf blowers stir up, I've seen it come into my yard, I've seen it come into my house. It gets on my walls, it gets on my windows, I've seen it get on some of your walls and windows. And I just thought I'd put that out there. And then the part about moving to the nuisance. When my mother brought me here in 1950, there were no leaf blowers. Just thought I'd throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Pete Saibene, I live at 204th Street East. I don't think, I don't know about being gamed or anything like that, you know, is that really the issue? You know, I've talked to a lot of people in my neighborhood, I've read the newspaper about the pulse, people writing in and saying what they think about this whole issue. I don't see a large vote for it, I see it the other way. So, you know, an ordinance that's going to allow the city to blow particulates in the park makes a lot of sense, doesn't it? So I can't do it, but the city can do it. It doesn't make any sense, okay? If you blow it there, what are you gonna do? Ban people from the park during those hours? It really is not a sense. There's a little bit of courtesy involved, we could solve this issue. If people would just tell your gardener, "I don't want you to blow." Sweep, do whatever it is. If enough people do that, it's pretty much gonna solve the issue. If some people wanna blow dust all over the place, they oughta be told. Say, "Look, tune it down a little bit, that's not the right thing to do." I think people can manage this issue without you having to vote on an ordinance that fines people, and we hire people to look after it, and $75,000 or $100,000 and whatever. It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense. Put it to a vote. The people I've talked to will probably not vote for this, for ordinance banning leaf blowers.
Thank you.
Mike Finucki, 588 Estamadera. So I've spoken to some of you and talked in detail a little bit about this. And, you know, I don't know what the big concern is on why we send it to a vote, on controversial issues that have been controversial for four or five years now, I think we've been hearing about this issue, isn't that what we said? I mean, yes, it's controversial. That's when you send something to the people, because it is controversial, because it affects people individually. And then people have an individual vote. And that's the most important thing here. Why would we be afraid to send it to the voters? The people that want the ban on this, why would you fear it going to the voters unless you are a minority in the situation? So let it go to the people, let them be educated. People aren't educated on this thing. I talked to a lot of people in town, spoke to someone right before I came over here, and they said, "They're gonna ban leaf blowers?" These people that live here for 30 years, they don't know. Some people don't read the paper. Some people don't come here to the council meetings. Some people don't know what's going on. But when you get a chance to vote, you're gonna be able to read and see what it's about and make an educated decision. It's all about being fair. You can hear both sides, but let the people make their decision. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? You've been waiting, haven't you?
I have.
Thanks, David. Larry Audis, 363 Evans Avenue.
Is that your last name?
Audis, A-U-D-I-S-S. I just agree with the gentleman before me, let's put it to a vote. I mean, I think that's the easiest thing to do, I think it's a fair thing to do. This spring, I tore out my landscaping, put in a artificial lawn with rock, and in June bought a leaf blower, 'cause the leaves started to come down, and now they're coming down. There's really no way to clean what I did without a leaf blower. You can't rock that big, you know, you have to either pick them out by hand or blow them with a leaf blower. So maybe I made a mistake putting in a water-friendly landscape, I'm not sure. Anyway, let's take it to a vote and let the people decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna bring it back to council for discussion and possible action. Council member Hunley?
Since the newspapers kept pointing me out, I'm gonna go first so that everyone's not left hanging while everyone else speaks. Thank you to everyone who spoke tonight, thank you for your comments. Some people laugh when they hear about this subject, because they think it's trivial, but just by the amount of thought that people put into their comments, I mean, you can tell that it's something that regardless of what side you come down on, it's something that people really care about. And I think that I heard a lot of valid points and perspectives across the spectrum tonight. So I am of the belief that Sonoma would be a better place without leaf blowers. From the beginning, I think the very first time we ever discussed this, I said that this was an issue where different communities have treated it differently, and I think it's something that reasonable people in communities can disagree about. And I think it all comes down to what a particular community wants, based on their composition, what their values are. So in this regard, I think that going into a ban is something that we should only do if it's something that the community, that is the Sonoma residents, really want to do. Because when you look at it, although it does give a great benefit to everyone that lives here, it also takes away something from the people that live here. And as some of the problems that were pointed out tonight, there's some real issues that people would have if this was something that was taken away from them. So I think it's something to be thought about very carefully. And in the past several months, I have been of the belief that a majority of the people in this community want to ban leaf blowers. But actually, as each month has passed, more and more voices have come forward, and I think everyone's kinda surprised the level of the conversation now and the number of people that have gotten involved, partially probably because the press has done such a good job covering it, but also because people have a lot of opinions on this. And even within the people that are advocating for a ban, there's different directions that people are coming from, like, is it because it's too much noise, it hurts your ears? Is it because of the dust, it's bad for your lungs? Is it because it's bad for the environment, it's bad for the ground, it's bad for the air? And similarly, on the other side, for justifications for opposing a ban, people do it because of property rights, concern for the businesses and workers, practicality of maintaining their properties. So the opinions of people in community are so divided, that I've spent hours and hours talking to people and reading emails and searching, and I no longer can find a consensus of what the community actually wants. So if this is something the community wants, the people that I was elected to represent, I think that there should be a conclusive way to find out. And that is, there is one way that several people have mentioned tonight, where every voice actually is heard, and that is to put it on the ballot, which only this point, when I feel the conversation has gotten so divided amongst people and I can't tell where the majority is, that I feel that it is no longer my ability to make this decision, and I have to hand the decision back to the people to make the decision for themselves. So I know that some people here disagree, and I've heard the argument that matters of public health and safety is something that the elected decision-makers should use or should make, and I hear that. My issue, which I said early on, looking at all the different scientific articles that we've gotten, which have all been very thoughtfully given to us, but as far as connecting the nexus between the harms of particulate matter in the air and the dust being blown up by leaf blowers, I think that the dots at this point are still anecdotal and deductive. And the study that was referenced tonight, the Burlingame Study, I think that was the closest thing I saw to actually like closing that loop. So for that reason, I can't elevate this to a public health and safety decision, and I think that the focus then is just on what the people want, and that's what I think that people should decide for themselves. And I know of at least one other city that has voted for their leaf blower ban. I think there might be two more, but I know that Santa Barbara enacted their ban by voting. And so I know that some people will leave today thinking that this perspective is a defeat, but I really don't think this is true, because I think by proactively putting this on the ballot and giving this to the people, that the advocates of the ban and all of the work that you've been doing over the last few months is paving a foundation to keep moving forward, whether if we were to pass something and then there was a reactionary referendum to put it on the ballot, then you'd be in a defensive posture. So I really think you're actually putting you in a positive position for this. And I like it coming from us putting it on the ballot, because then it's, instead of one side sort of, you know, fighting from the other, it's sort of a decision that's given to you, and each side can come to and make it together. So, and I know that having a ban, which is what people really... So, and I know that having a ban, which is what people are really hoping for, would be a much easier step in this battle, but after lots of contemplation, and I actually couldn't even sleep last night, 'cause I thought about this so much, but I, I, I know that I'm here to make the right decision, even when it's not an easy one. And even as one person commented on my Facebook page, that the decision that I just said would be a stain on my character and in the values of my, as a future leader, I still respect you all and I support you all, and I will be voting for the ban. I just, will be doing it as registered voter and not as your elected city council representative. So, additionally, in addition to moving forward in that path, if I have people joining me, I would also like to keep moving forward on the enhanced code enforcement program that we've been talking about, about a lot of things. I think that's something we need. And if people are still interested, we've talked before about restricting the hours and days of leaf blowers, I would be interested in continuing that discussion, as well as the restriction about not blowing debris on other people's property in the street. Thank you.
Is there any other council member that would like to speak at this time? Vice Mayor Gallion?
Well, I have been here since 2011, when the first issue came forward. I feel very disappointed this evening. This is the third time I have been on a precipice of perhaps going ahead and affecting something that is for the health and welfare and benefit of the community. I honestly have survived many, um, many discussion points, have done three separate sessions now on reviewing facts on both sides. I don't, you know, believe that a vote is the answer to this issue. I feel that this is a leadership issue of the community. I wanted to go ahead and be able to support at least the consistency that I have seen come forward in many community meetings, in many emails. This is an item that people are very passionate about. I have been verbally attacked in public on my particular stand for this. I have had someone show me total disrespect of the office that I currently have here. All of that I have endured through these particular sessions. And by that, I mean, it's, you know, for me personally, this is not an attack that I feel personally, or I'm upset, or I'm up here whining, if someone would happen to use that. I mean, literally, they have disrespected the office of being elected by a community for a viewpoint of which I represent, and that has been a very front and center viewpoint here at these meetings. We may not all represent the same individuals in our community, but we are elected by an entire community to represent the community. I accept what we have coming forward by our decision that we make, because it is a representation of a community. Now, I can honestly say that I am so extremely disappointed that we have come on the issue of glass, of gas leaf blowers that has been prevalent in all three of these attempts within ordinances. And yet, I continue to pursue comment after comment from a community that they cannot get along on a neighbor-to-neighbor basis when it comes to leaf blowers. They do not want to be, they do not want to be banned from a leaf blower, but there's no way that we have come to a nexus in this decision, even in an election, if it was to be a ballot measure. The wording of this would be so intense and so absolutely contentious, I don't know that you can get even a ballot measure that would represent what you're trying to do here today. I'm in leadership in this community. I can take if an ordinance is not passed. What I cannot take is the fact that I would not be respected for bringing it forward. I am wholeheartedly disappointed that this will probably fail on this floor at this current time. Thank you.
Is there any other council members? Councilmember Aggermonte?
Sure, thank you. It's interesting, you know, I'm, I think one of the things I'm most proudest of is trying to keep up with the emails, and my pat answer was always to people, I should've, I don't know how to cut and paste all the time, but what I said to most people that contacted me were that from a previous council, guidelines were, were passed on July 17, 2013, and they were developed by a former council, and it dealt with decibels, times, and days of use, including, this is exactly what my email said, including not blowing debris into the streets or onto neighboring properties. Well, generally, it was not, it was not followed, and it certainly wasn't enforced here in this city. I agree with Councilmember Hunley, I'd really like to stick with the subject of a code enforcement officer. I think that's something that's very important. I have received, and I'm sure like all of us, huge amounts of emails and phone calls, and I've been in meetings, and I'm really, you know, with people on both, from both People who, who refer to the people who are for the ban, as they refer, they're referred to as complainers, but they're actually people that wanna help our lives become healthier, and I really admire that. I think that's very important. So, I'd like to congratulate you on a job well done. And so, so well that my internet has gone out and I had to have my server, the people on my server, to be able to put it back together. Possibly that's not why, but I'm thinking, you know, you did such a great job. So, I have, you know, I've considered the ban like others here, where I've gotten an awful lot of comments for and against, and both sides make relevant arguments. And I believe this evening, there is no decision that's going to be made. I think that's being felt here. I will tell you that after meeting and, and listening to different people, I've met great, Bill Jasper actually has had, given me some great advice, Fred Albach, and Lynn Clary I know, Jerry Marino has sent things, Bob Edwards, Sarah Ford, C.C. Poncekin. All of these people have been wonderful, and I even had a couple, Harry and Linda Tissell from Professional Gardening come over and do some demonstrations for me, which I really appreciated. And I am married to a retired gardener. So, when we talk about, you know, different equipment taking, you know, the emitters off of your hose, off of your irrigation, I know exactly what that's about, because I'm married to a gardener, and he is angry two out of seven times, because when our gardeners go through the yard, we have leaks all over the place. So, I understand that feeling. I, you know, I think I've stated an issue with leaf blowers when I was running for this position, and it was pretty awful, that my husband and I were walking in a cul-de-sac, and the young man was the gardener for maybe seven houses, and he blew that thing at high throttle the whole time we were there. He was protected, he had his ears protected, he had a mask, but he continued to blow that when we walked through. I will also tell you, there are wonderful people who don't do that. They turn them off if I'm walking up Broadway when I walk in the mornings. So, there are people who would do, you know, are different sides of this. I have to say that I have come to a conclusion, and as I said, there's no decision here this evening, that I am willing to accept electric or, or battery-packed blowers. They don't meet the requirements that some people would like, but I also don't like the idea of having, of having a total ban of the residents, because I think we as residents are taking it all the time, because of a lot of traffic, all the other things that are going on in this city that I believe have to be dealt with. I think it's wonderful that we're successful, but you know what? I'd like to do something for residents. So, I think that's pretty clear, what I'm saying. And with respect to putting it on the ballot, how would that be done? It would have to be in four categories: all ban, just, just, just electric, just gas. I, I don't, I don't know how that would do. We'd probably have to hire a political consultant. I don't believe that it should come from us. I think it should be brought forward by people who, this is very important to them. I have listened to so much of the, this is probably the longest I've ever spoken up here, but I've listened to every one of the comments, and what I, I leave this issue with is that it was so wonderful to see this process working. Secondly, I know there are going to be other issues that we're going to work with in the, in on, in the future, and I hope that everyone is as adamant about those issues as they will, they are on this. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm finished with my comment.
Councilmember Edwards?
So, yes, I am ready to get on to affordable housing and other issues that I've brought up in our past comments. I appreciate both sides. I've, I get all the same emails, not probably as many as some of you, but I get a lot of emails, I read every single one of them. I have a policy of not responding to emails, because I get so many, and I have three businesses to run and two young children, so there's only so much time, and anybody who, everybody in this room has my cellphone number, so that's how, the way I respond the best is by cellphone. The, you know, I'm, back in ninety-nine, we had Measure A, and we had a council doing the same thing that we're doing, about a, I can't even remember how many, a hundred and twenty-room hotel up on the overlooking Sonoma. And we thought the council was gonna do the right thing and put it to the ballot, but they didn't. So, we had to draft a measure, and, and we got it on the ballot, and we won with seventy-eight percent of the vote. And got a pretty good sense of, and I worked with some people in this room, Rosemary Pedramzini was, she, she basically ran the whole thing, her and her husband Benny, and she hasn't aged a day since ninety-nine. I think that when, Sonoma's a different place, when it comes down to how you settle things, it's not just the five of us. I mean, we all got elected with a couple thousand votes at the most, and that's only, I think we have six thousand and something registered voters, so none of us have a clear majority of anything up here. And the way that I look at it, I'm just one of the people, people call me Councilman Edwards, just call me Gary. That's my, that's, that's how I am and who I am. I recently had my visit to China with our sister city, that's what we did. We cut out all the formalities, because that's how Sonoma is. And people do talk to each other, and they should talk to each other, and I've been saying that all along. Neighbors should talk to neighbors, period. I mean, I talked to Fred, he's not my neighbor, but every time I look at that pothole in front of his driveway, I wanna fill it, and one day I will get by there to fill it. And that's just how, how things have been done here for a long time. I don't believe in taking these young entrepreneurs we have, trying to make way for their family, trying to have affordable housing. We talked to somebody who was saying about a vineyard worker that works for Vineyard Management Company who's living in a garage with his son. I mean, I, I see that every day, I see those kinds of issues. Those are the things that I wanna work on. That's what my priorities are on city council. So, I'm happy to put this to an election. I have no idea how it would be written, but that's the direction I'm going, is let the, let the voters decide it.
Well, the mayor always speaks last, and I do wanna apologize for, during these proceedings, I've been on this council for three years, and I sat in the nosebleed seats for another four. And I came here tonight saying, "I'm not gonna tolerate anybody laughing because, or, or commenting," because people are out here, it doesn't matter what side you're on, it means a lot to them. People might think that I'm against the ban, but I publicly stated, "I hate leaf blowers." Are they a useful tool? Yes. When you look at that board over there and it says "city character," as I was watching people talk, I kept thinking about what Sonoma is becoming. And it scares me. I've talked to city staff about this, I've talked to my neighbors, I've talked to my friends. We live in a complaint-driven society, and people might, that might scare them by saying, "You know, why don't we have city staff out there enforcing?" I don't think that there's anybody in this room that wants to have the government telling you what to do and looking over your shoulder every minute of the day. Leaf blowers are a problem. And I don't think that the issue is too big for this city council. I think out of the respect for our city character, it should go to a vote. And I said that probably three years ago, don't quote me on how long I've been saying that, but I believe that it is a neighbor issue. And writing the ordinance or the, or the ballot is probably one of the simplest things that can be done. All we have to do is get both sides together and do a little bit of compromise. Because do we have a leaf blower problem in Sonoma? Yes, because we have wasted thousands and thousands of dollars of city staff time not dealing with affordable housing, not dealing with minimum wage, or all the different things that we could be working on. And it saddens me when I hear council members and the vice mayor saying that they have personal attacks against them. We make three hundred dollars a month. We get free health insurance for our family, but if you really look at, I think I make a hundred and thirty-one every two weeks is what my check is by time Uncle Sam, the government takes, their little cut. We're up here because we care about Sonoma. You individuals are here because you care about Sonoma. Everyone who spoke tonight cares about Sonoma. And if this goes to an election, we're finally gonna get to the end of it, 'cause I can tell you, Tom Rouse, Ken Brown, who was here speaking, my past, past colleagues that have been on the city council, along with past mayors, that I have talked to, they all say the same thing. When they got off the council, they changed their vote. It's hard up here to make the decision. And we have seen this go back and forth, and it isn't because people flip-flop, it's because it is a hard decision. If I had it my way, we would have leaf blowers in Sonoma, people wouldn't be able to, you know, sit there and full throttle and dust people out, 'cause that does happen. But I don't wanna have the person that spoke here, and they wanna do the right thing. They wanna be water-conscious, they want all this stuff. All they wanna do is they wanna blow off a little bit of their backyard. And I've had people tell me in private conversation, "Well, we're a complaint-driven society, we just won't, we just won't call those, we just won't turn those people in." Well, I'm sorry, but if this council went ahead, or the election goes to ban leaf blowers in Sonoma, we are not gonna be living in a complaint-driven society. We are gonna be living in a staff enforcement society. And if that's where Sonoma is going, then we need to take Sonoma city character right off of our council goals. So, I would like to entertain a motion from one of my colleagues on this item.
I have a question and a motion. If I wanted to make a motion about putting on the ballot, but then I also wanted to ask the others if they wanted to talk about the restrictions that we had discussed, particularly the not blowing it in the street, do I do it together? Do I do it separate? I'd rather do it separate.
Yeah, it's an interesting issue whether or not tonight, you're teed up with the agenda you have to give staff direction to place something on the ballot. I don't think it probably is within the, the scope of what is before you tonight, which is to consider introducing this ordinance. Secondly, anticipating that may then become agendized, it would be helpful to get clarity in what you would like to- in what you would like to do. Is it the, would your idea be to direct staff at some future agenda to craft an ordinance that would go on the ballot, but in the meantime, for the council to adopt an interim measure that would address some of the things that you've identified as needing more immediate attention? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I figured what actually goes on the ballot is going to be an entire discussion, and I don't even know what would come out of it. So I would like the opportunity to be on the agenda, and then we just kind of approach it and decide where the consensus lies. And then I guess you could call it interim, but I just think that we made some positive points, particularly about, but not just blowing the dust in the street. Like, that's what I keep coming back to, because I think that was something good that we needed to hold on to. So I don't know if it's just taking today's ordinance and then only keeping this one little part, or...
Vice Mayor Gallion?
Um, I'll wait.
The city manager is suggesting that if you wish to focus on some discreet issues, dates and hours, and banning blowing on neighboring property or the streets, those kind of changes could be incorporated into an amendment to our existing noise ordinance. We would need a standalone leaf blower ordinance. We could just pop in a couple provisions in the noise ordinance. And in terms of crafting something to go on the ballot, if it's going to come from the council, then the council, the three of you have to agree to what that's going to be on the ballot.
Today, or at a future date?
Future date.
Future date.
I'm just, I'm just expressing what is required. It requires the council to, again, come to an agreement on what would go on the ballot.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
Is it appropriate to just table the ordinance right now? And then at some point, that would mean that if someone ever decided to bring it back or whatever, but it would be canceled as far as any action further?
If the desire of the council is to table it, not discuss it for an indefinite period of time, a motion to table it is, would be appropriate.
I would propose a motion to table the ordinance on leaf blowers that we have scheduled before us. Let me just make sure. This is the wording, "An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sonoma, adding Chapter 9.60 of the Sonoma Municipal Code to regulate and prohibit the use of leaf blowers within the city limits."
I'll second.
Is there any discussion before I call for a roll call vote? City clerk, we have a motion and a second. Can we call for a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
No.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
No.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
No.
The mayor is looking for another motion? Yes. Or more discussion?
Or for discussion purposes, just to see if anyone's interested in keeping this thing that I've identified. I mean, if you are, I'll make a motion to keep this part of the current ordinance. Or if not, I guess we can just move forward.
Could I ask a question?
Uh, councilmember.
What part are you speaking of?
Well, specifically, I'm talking generally about, we had gone through an exercise of talking about restricted hours and days. We'd only talked about commercial and city property, because that's what we were talking about before, but maybe adding something residential. And then also, there was the little bit about restricting people from blowing debris off of a property. That was a best practice before, and we wanted to make it a part of the actual ordinance. And I thought that was good.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Well, that was my answer that I gave all the time in my emails, exactly what you're suggesting, never followed and not enforced. I'll say generally not followed.
If I could have the attorney right now...
The ordinance before you covers a variety of issues. It does not include, by the way, the prohibition against blowing on your neighbor's property or on the street. It's not in there.
Because it was dropped.
It is not in there.
It was dropped by mistake at one point.
Well, it's not in the proposal before you, nor is it in our existing municipal code. It's nowhere.
I know, but my concern is we just don't, we don't enforce, and we don't, and it's not followed.
So if you're proposing something new, then we'd have to come back at a future meeting with a new ordinance that you would at that time then introduce.
Uh, councilmember Hundley?
I would like to make a motion to direct staff to bring, at a future meeting, bring back the subject of putting this leaf blower ban on the ballot. Can I make that?
Sure, you can, absolutely. The council, anytime, can vote to put something on a future agenda, so that's completely appropriate.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion before this goes to a roll call vote? City clerk, we have a motion and a second to put this on a future item, agenda item? Yes.
So how would, if this passes, how would we propose to enforce that? Obviously, we would have to go into the discussion of a code enforcement officer.
As I had discussed at the last, that is already in the process, and that would be an, that's an internal process, so that's already kind of in the works, and the proposal's going to come back at mid-year budget anyway, so that's already, because it involves other ordinances, so...
The only motion that's before the council right now is to agendize a discussion at some future time to discuss putting a leaf blower ordinance on the ballot. That's the only motion in front of you right now.
Thank you.
Are we looking for a second?
Uh, we have a second.
All right.
Is there any other discussion? City clerk, we have a motion and a second. Could we do a roll call vote to agenda, agendize the leaf blower to go to a discussion to put it on the ballot in November?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
With a hope and a prayer, aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye.
Was that a, was that a 5-0? For public, we just made a motion, and it was the 5-0 vote to have future discussion of the leaf blower to possibly put it on the, on the election. Attorney, do we, we have a, we have a, we have an item here. Do we have to, do we have to vote, or it just dies on item, item 7A?
If you take no action, there's no action. There's no need to take no action. Meaning, if you're not going to do anything tonight on this thing, there's nothing, you don't need to take a motion to say you're not going to do anything.
So there's no other discussion on 7A? With that, we're going to take a 15-minute break. Bye. I'll go ahead and open this regular meeting. We have item 7B, Request for Proposals for the Preparation of a Housing Impact Fees Nexus Study, as called for in the City of Sonoma Housing Element, Planning Director Goodison.
Thank you, Mayor Cook, members of the city council. The City of Sonoma's Housing Element, which was adopted earlier this year in March, includes several implementation measures that are aimed at compensating for the loss of redevelopment, which had been the city's primary source of funding for its affordable housing programs. In particular, measures number one and number eight suggest establishing a housing impact fee that could be levied upon various types of commercial and residential development. Under state law, any such fee would need to be validated through a nexus study that demonstrates a link between the proposed fee and identified development impacts with respect to housing cost in Sonoma. The preparation of such a study is a highly technical task that requires specialized technical assistance. For this reason, the council, as part of its 2015-2016 budget, allocated $45,000 for consultant assistance in this area. Attached tonight for the council's review is a draft request for proposals soliciting consultant assistance intended to identify a process and key outcomes necessary to accomplish this work. The scope of work also includes an evaluation of the city's inclusionary housing program in light of the nexus study findings and the city's overall strategy for promoting the development of affordable housing. So we're recommending that the council authorize the circulation of this request for proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any council questions for city staff? Seeing none, I will take it to public. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council for discussion and possible action.
I am, I am so pleased to see this. You know, it's actually the meeting I went to last week at the county, the Health Action Committee. We discussed inclusionary zoning, and we feel, they felt, it would be great to have this before councils, because it's very forward-thinking, I think, and it also includes, you know, making that statement of a real commitment, so I'm really happy about it.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
Just a question. You know, I discussed this earlier with our city manager. I neglected to ask the timeframe. How soon do we think that this would be coming back to council?
Well, I would say that once we identify the consultant, get whoever it is under contract, it would take about six months.
Okay, that's, that's great. Thank you.
Uh, councilmember Hundley?
Yeah, I also want to say that this is really encouraging. We've had two things happen lately in the Affordable Housing Fund, and we can feel really good about it. One was the RFP for the Broadway property, and then now we have this. And I think this is how we're going to end up addressing our affordable housing problems, is finding little pieces that work together. And so I'm glad, and I'm interested to see what exactly it looked like, because we are such a little town, but thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion or possible action on this item? Vice Mayor Gallion?
I'd like to go ahead and introduce that we, we go ahead and propose the RFP for the preparation of the Housing Impact Fee Nexus Study, as called for in the City of Sonoma Housing Element.
And I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Could I call city clerk for a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye.
And I want to thank city staff and look forward to this. With that, we move to council member reports and comments. Vice Mayor Gallion?
I did not have any committee reports to report on. However, I would like to say that I will be attending with the mayor this Thursday, the mayor and council members' meeting, in which Jim Luddy is going to be talking about the homeless issue in Sonoma County. So I hope to get fast and forward on that, and I would hope that the proposal would be that they would be coming to city councils and talking about some of the issues that are being studied on a county-wide basis. I'd like to also say that I am, and always have been engaged in the seven years that I have been here, in looking for local reasonable rents for people, especially our workforce housing in our community. I know that there are many avenues. We've gone through quite a tumble here with redevelopment and dissolution, and are now just remaking what is left for us to do in this particular respect. But I have heard the issue countywide. I have heard it in many cities, Oakland, Richmond, San Francisco. We are not alone on this particular island. And for me, I feel that if I was to be dedicating my next year on council, that this would be one of my prime objectives. So with that, I'd like to just say that I had a wonderful time at the concert this weekend, and the Vintage Festival was probably one of the bests I have seen in years. I was able to participate all three days, and it was just wonderful to see people coming back to our community for that 118th year of a festival. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, councilmember Aggermonte?
Well, thank you so much. Of course, I went to my favorite meeting, which is the North Bay Watershed Association. They have the most interesting meetings, and one, they focused on the Petaluma River, which I thought was great. And I want to tell everybody, they said, you know, they have kayaks and rowboats for the asking to be able to use there, and I understand at no cost. I hope they don't get mad if I got that wrong. But it seems like it's so, I mean, it just seems like a great thing to do. As well, at the Health Action Committee, I'm so excited. We talked about homeless and homelessness and also housing, because Jim Luddy made his, gave his report to the Health Action Committee, and this is what they prepared from the county. In fact, I think the city managers are going to be receiving these and copies for all of the council. In addition, the suggestion from that meeting is that we do more than just discuss it here at the council, that we actually have a workshop for the public here in Sonoma to let them know about what's available. And I think it's so great, especially it ties in with what you've been talking about, Gary. So it was just opportune. I think it's wonderful. I'm really happy. There was another report by Mark Krug, Economic Wellness Housing Work Group, and they also are working on the same issue. And it was great, and I think it's all opportune, and I feel that there is a real commitment from the county to move forward on this. And so it would be great for us to be ahead of the game, and I encourage council members to support having a workshop for public. Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
So last Saturday, Vintage Festival Day, I attended a library kind of confab that I was roped into, and I said yes, but I'm glad I did. And it looks like they'll be bringing a ballot measure back at some point, which I think they lost by three points, but I think they, I didn't give a position that our city has, but I gave a personal position on it. But probably the best thing out of that is I met with a city council member in Healsburg, and she and I are going to tour each other's cities to talk about affordable housing, issues and opportunities, and banking relationships that always tie into every, every issue. So I look forward to that.
Councilmember Hundley?
I met with the Sonoma Valley Economic Development Steering Committee as their alternate. And one of the interesting things that they're doing right now is, they have previously put together a coalition of people in town that are involved in the tech industry to survey what their needs are, because this is an industry that perhaps we could explore because it has a low impact, but it potentially could bring a lot to the city. And then they did a second group, and it was creative people in the city, anyone from theater companies to artists, to dance instructors, to metal workers, just to get everyone together to see if there is, what the potential is for encouraging that community, which I think that there is a lot of potential that could come out of encouraging our artists to produce things that are unique to our city. So, very encouraging.
Thank you. And since our last meeting, I went to the Blessing of the Grapes, which was great, especially being a viticulturist, to see our city with the Sonoma Vintage Festival, which was well-attended. And I really appreciate all the hard work of the hundreds and hundreds of volunteers on that. And also, I attended the Sonoma Music Festival and gave a proclamation on Friday night. And I do appreciate what B.R. Cohen Charities has done in the last couple decades, 6.8 million. Don't quote me exactly on that, but that's pretty, pretty exciting. Sonoma does give back. It's nice being the mayor in a city where so many people get back, and that's why the city character is so important to me. With that, I would like to ask for a city manager's report. And seeing none, I will go public comments from the public.
Thank you, Bob Edwards, 310 East Napa. About a, over a year ago now, I guess, city council, the previous city council voted to make an RFP request for a minimum wage study. And nothing has happened on that. As far as I know, there's been no succeeding vote by council to revoke the vote to take a minimum wage, put out an RFP for a minimum wage study. So I'm wondering when that will happen. I think the time has passed. Things are accelerating so badly now that previously, the discussion had been talked about a $15-an-hour minimum wage. I think anything less than $25 an hour's a minimum wage in the city is just, is not even worth bothering with. That minimum wage issue ties intimately closely with the affordable housing issue that we're wrestling with. I don't think any of you, and certainly not me, could not be impacted by some of the discussions that we heard in... discussions that we heard in the pre-agenda remarks, public remarks, about people who stand, who were standing before you who have been evicted. There's just no question about it, it's pure landlord greed, there's just no other way to express it. They're taking charge of whatever the market can bear. In that regard, I've made a suggestion to board supervisor member Susan Goran, to look into the possibility of incentivizing landlords to agree to voluntarily enter into rent control agreements. As you may know, and I'm certain the city attorney knows, the state law greatly restricts your ability to enact rent control. Yet, nothing would prevent landlords from voluntarily entering into rent control agreements in exchange for other considerations, if I can put it that way, from perhaps city council, and certainly at the county level with respect to their property taxes. So that's, that's another thing you might want to be thinking about. But particularly, I think we need to get that minimum wage study, get it going. Those are intimately related, because it's, if the economy keeps even at a steady pace it is now, very shortly, we are going to have to find trouble getting anyone to come to this town to work. And Ms. Hundley's remarks about new industry, exploring new industry, I think that's critical. Let's be real blunt, the wine and tourism industry is a low-wage, stoop-labor business. You're never going to get good-paying jobs as long as we have that as our main industry. It's nice, we have tourists, it's wine country, we all love it, but we need to get higher-paying jobs. We need to get out of this business, and get a better mix, where we have some high-tech, artistic, something that pays real things, something that pays more than 25 bucks an hour. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Is there any other public comment?
Yes, Cecilia Ponison, again, 175 France. Mr. Mayor, you brought up the Sonoma character, and also, I feel I was lumped in as a complainer, but I, I don't think I'm a complainer. I really do believe I've given back to Sonoma from the very first month I moved here, because I started volunteering right away, mostly to schools, and in all the years that I've lived here, I have always, and so has my husband, given a point, made a point to give back. We have volunteered for many, many good causes. We have supported financially many good causes. And privately, we do things for the schools that we don't advertise, we don't put our name on things, we just do it. We do something that benefits every single school child in Sonoma. We don't want to draw attention to ourselves for that. We just want to be good residents. We want to be good citizens of this town. So to suddenly be called a complainer, it made me wonder, because I took a position, how is that, how does that give me that title all of a sudden? Try and accept people who come forward to you with their proof, with their facts, with their feelings, as informing you, as people who really do care. They're not just complainers. And to another subject, I was appalled to hear that Mayor Pro Tem Gallion was verbally attacked, a personal attack. This is so wrong. I know you all work very hard. We may not agree, but I know you all work very hard. You put in long hours. Councilwoman Hundley didn't sleep last night, and I'm sure some of you had a knot in your stomach when you saw certain people come up here and thought, oh, no, not again. Whatever your feelings, you all deserve the respect of the citizens of this town. And I would defend every single one of you from any kind of personal attack. That should never be tolerated. And I hope you never, ever, ever, none of you ever experience that again. Thank you for all your time, and I really, really want to thank the city staff for all the time that you have put into a particular problem. Your third go-round, I appreciate it. My time is up. I hope you all have a good evening.
And thank you for coming. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting.